Did you go?
We could begin the policy and curriculum committee meeting for November tenth. We have some curriculum items to talk about with NTSS and then we have policy which has some detail. And to start off, we will turn to Mr. Lynch with the middle school NTSS first quarter update.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Whistler. Mr. Cuck, I apologize in advance if my pacing around makes you nauseous watching this on TV or YouTube. Thank you all for having me here today to give you an update on how we are moving along with our MTSS program. When last we met, it was rolling out our plans, what we were going to do over the summer. And I just want to give you an update on how we used our time over the summer to build the program that we're using right now. Where we are with it and what our plans are moving forward. So just a reminder, MTSS stands for multi-tiered system of supports. Generally speaking, MTSS lives within a three-tiered system. Tier one refers to classroom instruction that all students receive. Tier two refers to targeted intervention that students that are performing below grade level. Math and reading typically receive in addition to their tier one classroom instruction. Little asterisk for the way we're using it's a middle school. We have a tier one and a half because in our advisory central. We have academic support for reading and math. So I'll talk a little bit more about how we're using that as we go on. Tier two is that targeted intervention in math and reading. Up at the middle school, we've made that a part of our encore block. So students that don't receive intervention, so all of our students that live solely in the tier one. MTSS, they typically have two class periods of cycle of our encore classes. Eighth grade is a little different because there's more encores, shared staff that are only offered one period of the encore block. But we're basically utilizing that time to also deliver instruction for our students that need tier two intervention. We break it down. Below there, so our intervention, our MTSS math and reading lab periods are for sixth grade during period four. Seventh grade during period seven and eighth grade during second period. A little bit of a visual here of the way the pyramid is coming to fruition up at the middle school. So tier one again is our classroom instruction. That's where differentiation happens as well. Every, our teachers are very adept at adapting their classroom instruction to meet the needs of the students in front of them. Through our data, through our conversations, we've identified students at each grade level that need additional support. But again, they're still receiving the same tier one instruction as students that are on grade level or even beyond grade level. We have a few programs that we've adopted this year. One into our tier one instruction is Alex. That is a math program that we use in both tier one and tier two intervention. That program is pretty robust. It allows us to provide on grade level support. It allows us to provide student to support to students that need intervention. It also allows us to give some support to students that are ready to go beyond grade level. So it's pretty robust. And we use our star testing in tier one. Tier two is our small group instruction. We have Mrs. Herring here who heads up our, she's our MTSS interventionist. She also leads the reading intervention at the middle school. We use Alex again as as one of our math programs. We use Lexia and Bridges, which is another math program. Our focus for this school year is is on tier two intervention. The next tier, tier three would be even smaller groups of students in some cases, if the numbers allow more almost individualized. Our focus is tier two this year. Identifying students, letting our tier two interventions really take hold. Letting our data, data meeting process where we identify students and identify their needs and how we're going to support them. Making that as strong as possible. So we can get to a point this year where we feel very, very comfortable in our system. What I mean by that is being able to move students in and out of intervention levels as need be. But again, we'll be talking specifically about tier two this evening. Okay, so the beginning of the year, lot of conversations with Mrs. Herring and myself about student data. We wanted to use all of the data that we had at our disposal. We had classroom, well, I'll just go through what's here. So. We are fortunate enough that the elementary school for about 10 years now has been living in MTSS. So we get students from fifth grade that were receiving MTSS support services before coming to sixth grade. At the end of the year, we have our transition meetings with sixth grade teachers. I'm sorry, fifth grade teachers where they're able to tell us what strategies are being used with students. If they need to continue or if they're ready to step down in the level of intervention that they receive. We also look at PSSA performance. Just a word about that real quick. The focus is on below basic and basic. That feedback that we get from PSSAs is telling us that students are not performing on grade level. We do live in a world though where sometimes students have a bad three days, students have a bad two days. Where they don't perform where they might be expected to. That's where the next piece of data comes in, the PVAS projection. The PVAS projection is actually an average of the last three years of students' PSSA performance. One thing we were very, very conscious of, and we hopefully maybe give you a little taste of that later on this evening is outliers. Students that are showing growth in the classroom, but when we get to standardized testing. Maybe you're not performing where teachers would expect them to, or like I said, they just had a bad week. It happens. Sometimes we have students that are moving into the district from other settings where. They weren't used, they're not used to the standardized testing that we participate in. It's a new experience. It's a new experience for sixth graders. It's a new experience for eighth graders that are now being challenged. And some also taking keystones. So it's something we took into account while focusing on data that's there. We also used our star benchmark data. When we were talking in the summer, we had three points in the previous school year, beginning of the year, so about September. Middle of the year, which would be December or January, end of the year, April. We also have a program called Ed Insight, which houses all of students' benchmark data and their standardized testing. Gives us a pretty good picture of where the student has been historically, as long as they've been in the district. If they've been receiving support, we get some of the information there. But all to say is that on a long enough timeline, we can see if students are testing consistently and showing growth. Or if there's areas where they're stagnant or even starting to drop off a little bit. And we also. Looked at students' classroom performance and took input from their previous teacher. How did they do? What are the areas of weakness? Could they benefit from more support? So as we went through, we took all of this information, we created a watch list. We weren't in a position where we can make any decisions about anything just yet. But we had a list of students for sixth, seventh and eighth grade that we had our eye on. Really focusing on our beginning of the year star testing for this year. That would be the last piece of data that we would look at to try to have a really good snapshot, a really good understanding of where a student was. And what support they may or may not need. So when we got that information. We looked at all of the students, but we started with that watch list of students. Is their performance consistent with what we we would have expected? Either positively or negatively, meaning they're above or on grade level, or they were performing below. If that was the case, we started having conversations right away about what kind of support does this student need? If there were outliers, we took it more of a historical, took a zoom out. Is this truly an outlier or was the outlier that they were performing above grade level, really looking at all the data that we have? We started to have data meetings with teachers, their classroom teachers, as well as classroom teachers they had the years before. Here's all of the data we have for this student. Does this tell the picture? Do they need more support? We started to look at or come into account, in some cases, it was. I don't want to say glaring, but it was, it was there right in front of us. Students needed math or students needed reading. We also ran into some instances where students needed math and reading. So looking at the schedule that we had, looking at the resources that we had in front of us. What was the area of greatest need? How are we going to get those students support? So some students, we knew we needed to give them tier two MTSS. Some students, it was more about how do we support them in the academic support setting during our advisory period? A big piece too, that we. We, we used as we went through, especially if there were students that weren't quite sure. We're just having conversations with families. What was going to be the best for the student in this case? In some cases, it was the MTSS support that we were recommending. Some cases it wasn't. We just had these conversations openly, honestly. And we knew that this is a whole student support, a whole student approach. And we needed support from the home as well as the school to make sure that this was going to work. From there, we changed schedules as needed and we were off and running. One thing I do want to make sure to point out. As we got into this process, we looked at intervention a few different ways. Students that had IEPs were identified with math or reading disabilities and were receiving replacement instruction. We considered that to be an intervention. There's also a level of our math instruction. Which is primarily geared towards students with IEPs. It's co-top math where there's the learning support teacher and the grade level math teacher. We considered that an intervention as well. We'll come back to that in just a little bit, but I wanted to just make sure I highlighted that. So this next slide here is a snapshot of all of the data that we collected. This is basically a few rows of the summer work that was done. So. As I said, we knew if a student received elementary MTSS support. Has the student been identified as a student with with a learning disability? Are they receiving replacement instruction? What was their ELA PSSA score? What's their ELA PVAS projection? What's their math PSSA score and their math projection? So that's what we used to create our watch list. This is just the top couple of rows of one page. But to give you an idea of this, the kind of data that we were looking at. So we're actually going to take a break from the presentation. Dr. Myers, if you could come over. In front of you. Is the paper. Please turn it over. We are going to have a data team meeting. Or sort of a data team meeting. Mrs. Herring, if you'd like to join, I'll show her. So what you have in front of you is. For all intents and purposes, all of the data that we use to look at to help determine what level of support, if any. A student needed to receive. So this would, these meetings that we would run, Mrs. Herring runs now. We start out just the way that it's happening right now. Basically, I would stand in front of everybody, talk to you about the piece of paper that's in front of you. And just give you five minutes to look at, become familiar with the data that you're looking at. And the first thing that we want to do is we want to have questions. So as you look there, what questions jump out at you?
My goodness, thank you. Is this one person?
No, that each, good question. So each row is a different student.
The. The data point where there's two proficient scores here for their ELA and math. So I mean, I don't really, that's just what kind of jumps out as one of the few that there would be two there against still be on the list. And what's the cutoff for between proficient and basic?
Oh, I'm so glad you asked because I wrote this down.
For each grade level, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, so for. ELA, sixth graders is, so again, we looked at basic to below basic. So anything below nine hundred and ninety-nine is the P, the PSSA scores that we were concerned with for ELA and for math.
We have a advanced math student. Also basic university.
Yeah.
Interesting combination.
Yep, but yet his projection is almost eighty percent. So looking at that students. I would ask the grade level teacher. What concerns they are seeing or noticing at all, if they're noticing any concerns. And if that teacher has that student in our first level of support, which is advisory. How many days a week do they have a need for advisory support? And if they don't, they are flow almost like it's in nine twenty-three. So I would. Because we do have that Alex program through all of our math students. I would want to see how they are performing on their Alex programs, their pieces. That's a concern though, but for that kiddo definitely, or I'm sorry, it's not math, it's ELA, sorry, ELA.
Are there any other notices jumping out at you?
So I noticed a couple of lines where you only have the star boy.
Beginning of the year. Sorry, yeah. So as we would go through, we would, we go through every line. Like I said, each one of those rows is a student. So we are looking at that data. Trying to come up with questions. As to why might this be happening? So if a student is below basic in any area, that's screaming to us that. We need to get this student some support. So what you wouldn't know, and we didn't know in some of these cases at the time, where some of these students were in the middle of being identified with a learning disability. So in the time that we started learning, looking at this data with these students. As I mentioned before, some interventions became very apparent because they were going to receive replacement instruction. And in many, many cases, the students that are below basic in math or reading. Are students that have learning disabilities in those areas and are receiving replacement instruction there. So we are at a point where most of the concentration of the students that we are working with in reading and math are in the basic category.
Yeah, just to kind of. There's so much data here and you don't, you know, if you don't know kind of the points, so. Because they're receiving replacement instruction, because that's what they need, they're being instructed inherently below grade level. But yet that PSSA score is always going to be to grade level. So there, there's really no expectation at that point that they're performing great level right now in, in. And just the PVAS scores, the PVAS percentage is a probability. So that is based off of the previous three years, or if there's less than three years, depending on the age of the student. The previous three, up to three years performance, the probability that they will perform at that level. Right? So to see a student who's basic, who had a, you know, is at the eighty percent probability to perform. That's a, that's a major outlier from what their previous performance would be. So again, just. Might complicated more, but so these ELA PVAS projections, these are the projections to the PSSA score that is just before it. Because those projections are from, if these were current sixth grade students. It's projections to their sixth grade scores, which are based off of their fifth, fourth and third grade scores. So just.
Some students also, we would look, so if we remember that cutoff score to be proficient is nine ninety-nine. We look at some of the students where they were in the basic category and looking at one student with a nine eighty-eight. Depending on, I'm not a PSSA expert in scoring, but looking at enough of them, that could be one question in one category. So we took that into consideration after many conversations, either way. A student that is proficient with a score of a, like a ten thirty. They're proficient. Are we comfortable that they are consistently proficient? So going back, looking at previous year's data, how did they perform? How are they performing on their star tests? How are they performing in the classroom? Were we comfortable that that student is securely above grade level? Or were they? In a good spot on that, those two tests, two, three test names. So those were part of the conversations we had. We also were looking at this data, looking at that, those scores. So a student that had a nine eighty-eight. Maybe we, they're better served receiving academic support twice a cycle rather than us pulling them out. Of an encore class to receive MTSS every day. Because at a certain point too, it became. We can really only serve so many students at a time. We need to make sure that we're, to the best of our ability. Identifying the students that need the most intensive intervention that we can offer. So. As we have learned. This could be a very, very long process going through, looking at this data. But it's important, and this is the information that we have at our disposal to make these decisions. One of the things that we've gotten comfortable being comfortable with is this is very much a snapshot in time. PSSA scores we get in the summer. We won't, students don't take the PSSAs again until the spring. So. We really have to rely on our star testing, our star benchmark testing to be our guiding light. As we go through the rest of the year, as our students making growth that we need them to make. To be on grade level when the PSSA comes around. Does anybody have any questions, not even about the data, just in general so far?
I think another thing, just from a philosophical standpoint, is that you have all this objective data and then you have all the teacher subjective data. And it, most of the time, you're using, once you get down to this granular level, you're using the subjective data. To confirm or refute anything that stands out, you know, as an outlier or, you know, incongruent in.
Yeah, yep. A, a big question that we would have, as we were having initial conversations with students that we identified was. Why does classroom performance, why is it not always the same as star testing or as PSA testing? And that's a hard idea to reconcile, but it really comes down to. Again, these are, a lot of these tests are snapshot in time. You're in the classroom with a student, you see a student is, is struggling with a concept. Teacher's going to address that in the moment, however long it takes them, how many days, how many class periods, they're going to work with that student to make sure that they understand. What's going on and what the student or the teacher expects of them. You can't do that with the PSSA. So we take that into account too, and those were part of the conversations we were having with families of this is how we think we can best support students. Not that teachers aren't doing it, classroom instruction, the tier one instruction is very good, very sound. Somewhere along the line, there were gaps in learning and we want to try to address those gaps if that's what we can.
I just have a general question. Is there any like behavioral plans that ended up being developed with this?
We have some students that I would say are tier three behavioral. Meaning that we've referred them to every resource that we have. There are students that work with Mrs. Lenhart, in addition to working with Mr. Chester. In addition to receiving counseling from Family Guidance Center. So we don't have that pyramid as mapped out, but we have. I would say five students currently in the middle school that are at a tier three level of behavior MTSS.
Then just another general question. This was, this is all online, correct? The PSSAs are.
The PSSAs are testing all online.
And last year they were on paper, correct?
No, we took them online.
Okay, what, years now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Oh, is this?
We're just using last year, but yes.
But for the projections, would that go into with?
The projections would have, the projections would have been on paper, but the actual scores are online. Yes, the data went into projections. So. You're, you're correct. You just, you guys were talking about this year, last year.
I got you.
Yeah. Good. Few more slides if you don't mind, Dr. Moore. Thank you all. Hopefully that wasn't.
I like that. It's helpful.
Good. All right, so. In, let's see, so we did the, the work to create the watch list in the summer. Our first week back in September, we started our star testing. We wanted to get this off and going as soon as we could. All of that data, all of those meetings, it broke down this way. In sixth grade, we identified eight, eight students. For tier two intervention in math, nine in reading, seventh grade, ten in math, eleven in reading. Eighth grade, ten in math, ten in reading. I just realized, I don't, the numbers for academic support are much greater. We try to keep each group manageable, so it's between twelve and fifteen students, but those are groups that are meeting twice a week. Sometimes there were seats, some students would be in reading, academic support and math academic, academic support. In many cases, we had students that we identified needed math or reading MTSS, and they're getting academic support in the other subject. So those numbers are bigger than this. This is the most intensive intervention we can offer right, or we do offer right now. So once we had our students identified, once we scheduled them into MTSS, the hard work became. We needed to start to identify what specific areas of learning there is where the challenge is. Star testing can give us areas in terms of standards. The PSSA gives us feedback, how a student scored and the different anchors that they use. But it doesn't give us the specific areas that need to be targeted. So for reading, we're talking about phonemic awareness, decoding. Comprehension, yeah. For math, it's number sense, multiplication, division. The very basic areas that we'd hope to master in elementary school. So the way that we did that was in ELA, we used Lexia. Our star oral fluency and direct instruction as well as classic subscription, which works. With students where they are, not necessarily on grade level. Math, in the math lab, they use numeracy assessments, which are very intensive, one-on-one, working with students for. Sometimes the entire intervention period, one student with the math teacher to identify the specific areas of weakness. Alex is the program I talked about before that can respond. It is a computer program, but it responds to students where they are. And of course, direct instruction as well in the lab and Bridges curriculum. Which is used in the elementary school also. Next is consistent monitoring of progress by the teachers delivering the intervention. There's a lot of communication between Mrs. Herring and the ELA and reading teachers. The math teachers are the teachers delivering the intervention. So they're in a very unique spot to see the students. That they are working with on their weaknesses and how it's translating to the classroom in real time. So that's paying off really well. And we've had time during our A-day. Advisory, when we have den days where everybody is in the gym, we're able to pull teachers out to have specific data meetings and instruction planning meetings for intervention. So we just ended the fourth quarter. Wow, we just ended the first quarter. Yeah. So we just ended the fourth quarter. Uh, wow, we just ended the first quarter. Yeah. Uh, we began math and reading lab on Thursday, September eleventh. That was our third cycle. Our, so A day of our third cycle, we started intervention. We gave the star um progress monitoring for the, during the week of October sixteenth. We made a commitment to all of the teachers, the students, families we were working with and our encore teachers specifically because I was asking a lot of them, a lot of flexibility, students coming in and out of their classes. And we really wanted to make a commitment to uh a set amount of time for intervention before we would be moving students in and out. And we're using a quarter, about a quarter to as our kind of timeline to work with here. So as we approached the end of the first quarter, we did our first round of progress monitoring. We use the star test as kind of the way for students to move in, so we're committed to using the star test to identify growth if students are ready to step down in their level of intervention. And we identified two students in math and reading for sixth grade. Four students in math in seventh grade, two students in reading in seventh grade. Three students in math in eighth grade, two students in reading in eighth grade that were ready to step down their level of intervention, so. They did not, they, they are not receiving tier two intervention. They stepped down to academic support, so they're also not just being put back into tier one without any support or just the tier one level of support. We wanted to make sure that it was really a step down process to make sure, one, that they, the growth that we saw and that we were able to identify is solid and that we were able to still support them as they continue to grow on their way. Okay, so in the second quarter and beyond. So students that are remaining in the math and reading lab continue to receive intervention. There's a few week period right now where the groups are smaller. So that's good, especially in a setting like this, where the teacher delivering the intervention has a smaller group of students to focus on. The district has a assessment calendar. We're coming up on the winter assessments where we will give the star benchmark to all of the students. We will use that information to have data meetings again to see if there are students that as the year has gone on, learning gaps have presented themselves and they may benefit from tier two in destruction or tier two intervention. Maybe they benefit from more academic support time. Just using more data that we collect throughout the year to identify any learning gaps that are presenting themselves and try to address them as quickly as possible. That is the M T S S update at the middle school. Any questions?
I think I have one more question. Would you be able to just walk through for tier one? Like uh, like a classic example of what that may look like?
What's happening in the academic support?
Yeah, so like for for like what type of differentiation? Would occur, like is this something that's a regular thing? Is it more specific to that kid like? Like, let's say, like this, is there like, like check and connect, like uh like organizational stuff that goes along with that, like?
It would depend upon the student's need, so it would be individualized and that's going to be conducted by the on grade level E L A teacher. Um, in sixth and seventh grade, the students are split between the reading teacher and the writing teacher. And depending upon the upcoming assignment, a student may need um just time to have, not necessarily proofread their writing piece, but to walk through and discuss, making sure that they have all the components that they're going to be bringing upon with their rubric. Um, sometimes during homeroom, our homeroom teachers will have that organizational check with a student. Or that could also happen with the grade level teacher. But um just even in our math classes, classrooms, it's the basic facts, the multiplication, division. Um, right now, middle school, it's one step, two step equations, so it's a quick review of that. Um, and also, some of our students have opportunities in E L A, they have Alexa program. So that works on word study, grammar, as well as comprehension, so depending upon the level and need, that's um, it's very individualized in the advisory period, um during intervention time, it's um we do, I do more like two or three, maybe a whole like, it's ten kids, but we do the needs depending on what is brought upon with Alexa programs, so.
So it sounds like it's a mixture of both like student initiated stuff and teacher initiated stuff.
Yeah.
Sometimes it is um also playing as part of the way the lesson carries out and if the E L A classrooms, you walk in. Yeah, you could see whole group instruction on uh strategies that are being used or the specific writing um that they're doing and then five minutes later. Doing individual conferencing with the students in the back on what they're act, what the student is actually working on themselves. Um, in math, very similar, sometimes in math, there's a lot of hands-on, a lot of I don't wanna say group work, cause that sometimes gives an error of of or gives some sort of impression, but the students that a teacher has other students working with as a support, that's all part of tier uh differentiation as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure I said, just said anything there, but yeah.
Any other questions?
Related to maybe not directly, I would just ask, you know, a little bit about the the way the library is being used.
Oh, the library is being used, okay. The library is our spot for the reading lab. The M T S S intervention, so the one corner is gonna set up as a classroom per se. But also, we've been very flexible that our sixth, seventh and eighth grade E L A teachers have been bringing their classrooms into the library to sit and read, have small conferences. I also jump in and help the E L A teachers have that one-on-one conference with the student about their self-selected book that they're reading. Um, students are checking out books, returning books, um and we have had over three hundred and fifty-four books in circulation this school year. Um, last year when I looked at the records, it was about a little over five hundred, so we're, so um. Thankfully, our, um, I really do appreciate the E L A teachers bringing the kids in and having that time just to check out, so. Try to make the library a place to come and boast knowledge. And every month, you can kind of see, um, Mrs. Westgate has kind of the books for the month. Um, if you come into the middle school library, it'll be our center. Um, both shelf that'll have a different theme for the month, so. And then Friday. Friday, um, we are going to, um, the elementary school has kind of a bear or deer time where they, everybody stops and reads. So in the middle school, on Friday, we are going to have Cougars conquering chapters. Where during advisory, everybody's going to sit somewhere, um, the school is going to be separated into groups of sixth, seventh and eighth graders and everybody's gonna just sit and read for a bit and then sixth and seventh and eighth graders are gonna share why they picked up the book, what, what are they hoping to find later on in the book? Just gonna share, so that maybe what Dr. Myers is reading, I might wanna pick up during Thanksgiving break or next holiday break, or that could be my next book that I read for my one pager for Mrs. Stern, so just kinda getting that, promoting literacy and sharing your books and reading is cool.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody would like an additional packet, I have plenty.
That brings us to policy and uh we have a lot of details to go with the six twenty-six federal fiscal compliant.
Hey, one second, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a federal-based policy, so we don't have very much leeway as far as adaptations of what to do to it. Uh, the policy itself, there, there are a bunch of attachments that have to changes also, policy itself. Uh, monetary threshold for audits, uh record retainment. Cybersecurity measures, record keeping provisions, and new sections regarding reporting violations and whistleblower protections, those are basic areas as far as what has been active. A little terminology has been reduced to simply federal regulations. Once again. Dealing with federal money. Pretty much, most part is said as far as terminology is so.
With the general comment and reflect on. You, Dr. Myers, are really even, I guess, the people that are writing the policy, but um. It's so much information to be in a school district policy, I feel like, and uh Jim Strader used to always say, why can't we just say we'll follow the federal guidelines for this? And do that, and it just, I I mean. If it doesn't change all that often, I guess it's not that big of a deal, but it's so much just tedious.
Yeah, it's Right, I mean, that's the idea, it's like, we're, we sit here and we say, this is basically just what we have to put into a policy about federal expenditures, that sort of goes and faces the concept of law and control, we just have to do it. You know, that was always Jim's point too, I think, is that we're just voting on something that is compliance-based and not really under our control. That being said, when we complete the, the documents in the system related to federal policy, they often wanna see that we have the policies in place. Let's say we do it, so it's just, yeah. So it's um and I think a pure kind of federal government, you know, entity would say, well, that's fine, but they'll take money, right? But, you know, so um, it's just, it is so tedious, it's so detailed, it's just following the federal funding. The nice thing about this one, this happens, the pieces of change are actually like haircut, so you know, record retention inside the three years, you have the whistleblower requirements and so forth. Yeah, when you read through the rest of it, it's very tedious. Me personally, when there's big chunks of folded material, but that makes my job easier, so I appreciate that. Rather than all the editing that goes into it, but uh, so yeah, those, those two sections, new sections at the end. Mandatory for violations. Lengthy, but uh when our end easy to install.
Sentiment. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
First reading.
All in favor, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
We'll move to the full board, six twenty-six, we're first reading, and then that's includes the items that are on the agenda. Um, I did have one thing that I wanted to present to the committee, just in conversations, um, I kind of bounced this off Jason and Rebo, just to make sure I wasn't kind of too far out in left field on this, and then I figured if this is something that makes sense, that's worth a, another conversation, maybe we could move from there, but um, it all stemmed from the trend that I found in speaking with uh individuals involved, including the tech school, both tech school locations, um, that there was just a growing uh desire for students to attend and the programs are filling up and I jotted down some notes, I didn't look them up, but in general, we have the three-year trend from what I gathered was moving definitively in the direction of the programs are just filling up more and more and more, and then uh there used to be historically a little bit more opportunity for for the possibility of some ninth graders for early enrollment um under certain conditions and those from what I can gather sounded like they're almost non-existent or non-existent at this point.
Yeah, they're um, the B C T C has not committed to that they're not going to exist this year, they will only exist if all their shots are not taken. All their slots are going to be taken, you know, I, we've advocated some, I almost wish B C T C would just say it's not happening anymore, but it's not gonna happen, so we're gonna have to comply.
Sure.
And then not be able to, to that ninth grade. Because of the popularity and and I, I disagree, I should say completely with the idea that students are going to be in the full seats for the program that they should, we should be seats that way versus that ninth grade kind of explore.
Sure. So I guess what, what I kind of was bouncing around off as an idea was um, if there was, if we are looking at this trend of um, the trades becoming more popular and therefore as the tech school is going to be filling up, um, does that leave possi, the possibility of a future um, area that we could perhaps offer something within the high school that would fall within that kind of like pre-tech realm, I guess. Um, and so, I mean, and again, this is, this is, this is coming from a very limited framework of my understanding. Um, but like how this just is conceptualized to me at this point as well, you know, we have a building, we have grounds, we have, um, you know, albeit limited, but we do have. Uh, and there's also some things that are in place right now, um, but I guess my thought was well, not a thought, but just a question of if it would be worth looking into kind of like what exists. What the trends are, if one, this would be a, a, a wordy thing to even explore. And then if so, would, what possibilities would then be on the table as far as what we could offer and then along with that? What would they look like? Like being anything from, and I'm thinking more along the lines of like a ninth grade opportunity more or less would be the expansion. Uh, and again, it would just be whether it would be a uh, a program that would be kind of its own thing, maybe like a half year, or it would just be kind of like a supplemental thing, but more or less, I kind of conceptualize it as, you know, working with the tech school in order to kind of identify what would be worthwhile within what we could possibly offer and then just kind of you know, see where things go from there as far as what possibilities we.
So you're, it, and are you thinking specifically like an exploratory type program? For targeting ninth graders that, but in any of the areas that do feed to B C T C or just, or even broader?
I think any or all, I mean, I, I, to me, again, limited on this, but if you're looking at some of those universal skills. That would then follow you to the tech school, you know, like I guess, you know, your soft skills that would be your more tech oriented, whether that could be anything from you know, just their expectations, um. But yes, that could also certainly include specific programmatic areas as well. So I guess I'm not really, I'm not really thinking in terms of specifics, if it ended up being something or with something that was specific, I think that would be the same kind of concept that I'm looking for, it's just kind of figured I'd throw it out there and and see what you guys were kind of thinking about it and then if it's something that's worth it to kind of look into it more and then see what's realistic, what's not, like idea. I apologize, I have, you know, no real written, but it's more, it's more just like a, a concept than anything. I apologize, I have, you know, no real written, but it's more, it's more just like a, a concept than anything. Based upon, I guess, again, to backtrack, first foremost, I guess, would be to. To quantify if my broader perceptions are reality. If we are looking at this where this trend is going to continue and then eventually we get into. Areas where tech becomes more and more competitive, would it be something that then we would have? Where kids who went through this program would have an edge then, or your Kutztown kids like. Have a better chance at getting into the programs that they got to get into.
I mean, it's definitely, I think, you know, I, I say this too often, I think in our place, they. In a concept of like unlimited resources, I would say a hundred percent, we could build something out, you know, that it's. That still that need to be really special, I think what's going to be interesting for us to look at deeper is what would it look like in ninth grade schedules? How would we teach it here, you know, and what type of, uh, kind of staff resource allocation required to do it? Uh, but I think it's even from that generalized idea, I think it's something we could take back to the team and see. Uh, what it, there, there would be interest, the hundred percent, so I mean, I think you're spot on with that, with the interest. Um, to, to really look at what it could look like in practice. The, the resources. So. Yeah, I think we could, we'll take it back to, to our group and, and talk about what.
When there was a ninth grade opportunity, did those students then attend BCTC for four years?
Most often they would, yeah, it was considered like an exploratory option for, and it was typically only a handful of kids, I mean, um, I think the program. Altogether might have had ten to twelve kids, that's from all districts, we often had one or two or three that would attend. Um, I say not every year, but in that, in that range. But it was to meet the needs of students who, you know, certainly. Given the opportunity, were probably going to select or want to apply to go to BCTC, but just weren't sure what they would be. But what program to be applying for, or knowing that they might not get their first choice, but they still wanted to apply to BCTC. So they would have a better idea when their second choice might be, you know, I think it was really to help students kind of. Through that waterfall of decisions that were, that get thrust upon fourteen-year-olds and the parents, because that's when you're competing within there, so. Um, having a leg up in that decision-making process, extremely valuable. So I think, I think there's a lot of good pieces to the, that concept and idea, so think about what it would look like. But it's a great time to do it, um, again, we do have. We have grounds, we have resources, we have shops, we have, you know, we have the ability. Family consumer science rooms and kitchens, like we do have every small version of something we might need to create something that's a little bit more exploratory. And preparing for the skills, so, well, I, I love the idea, but let us take it with a little bit, come back with some. Thoughts on what it would look like.
I, I also think of our research course, my great research course, and think about LA and some of the things we've done. Pure exploration as far as research there, um, and that goes back to students determining, or trying to figure out what they want to do. So I think if you involve several of those courses in the process, it's not the hands-on stuff, but it's more the. Mental, um, work throughs as far as determining what that next year might look like, so I think there's those opportunities in addition. So it's to, to build that out, I think there's really good. Things there that could do that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Um, I would like to know if we're going to get an update on having gotten rid of the. In ninth grade, you know.
High school's coming to present next month. That's the middle schools this month, high school's coming next month, so.
Not the MTSS, but the actual, like, the.
It's, it's a combo, yeah. So, plus, I mean, really, an update on all the high school changes.
Yeah, all in favor, during this meeting, say aye.